There it goes.
You live?
Yeah, I'm live. Let's turn the volume on.
Looks good, thank you.
No problem. Oh, the sound? Oh, okay. It is bad. I'm trying to work on it. Well, it's coming out of here and that, yeah.
Okay. So I was with all of you now. We're praying for everybody's normal way. Over seven, Father, we love and we magnify you, Father. We count to you, God, on behalf of Greensboro this evening. And God asked from you, that you would lead us and you would guide us in the ways, God, that are true. Lead us in your ways, God. Allow us to make a decision based on what we hear from you and not just what we feel. We love you and magnify you, so Jesus, like we do pray. Amen. Skip right down to, I don't know, three on your journey. That's the rule of, and it's for government, the T-Spot. This is what I do, I have a segment I have been explaining. Explaining T-Spot.
Originally, when the legislature created the transportation special purpose local option sales tax, it was a regional sales tax. We were included with Clark County, O'Keeffe County, Oregon County. And we all shared a percentage of that money that would have been collected. It went on the ballot, I think, a couple of years ago and failed. The referendum was not passed in Grand Canyon. Since then, legislators have given, legislators have given us the opportunity to do a single county T-Spot, which is what this referendum is for. What we do, we would, it would apply a 1% sales tax in addition to the local option sales tax. It would generate about $5.5 million a year currently throughout the whole county. From that, there's various formulas that would decide the city of Greensboro's portion of that. One of, one of those formulas that we look, that we've been negotiating with the county would provide a ratio to all of the cities by the, by the amount of miles of road or city has. Using that formula, we, we have a 6.55% of all roads in Grand Canyon. So you would, we would apply that six. Miles. So using that formula. I'm, I'm gonna negotiate this with our. The answer to the question earlier was that if you miss the bar, we go to do this. The. We've been, the county's been growing at a fairly rapid pace. The 1% sales tax has been growing at about 18% a year. I mean, yeah, a year. But the current numbers are 5.5 million. If you take our 1%, our 6.55% from that, that gives the city of Greensboro about $360,270 a year.
How many percent was it then?
360,000. But if you factor in the five-year total, which this tax runs with the added inflationary aspect of the growth, it comes to a little over 400 and something thousand a year. And keep in mind, this money is for only for capital projects and only for roads. Now, that does include safety items, it does include sidewalks, it includes repaying. All those things that we're currently spending out of splosh, we can spend out of T-Spot.
So who still be able to spend the current splosh more as, of, of the line I was still the curve, the music one, music also? We may have to pour that money forward.
Correct. We generally, we spend those, our splosh money on sewer and water. We could get, we would have, actually, that would be those more money that's been on those things.
This is how it is, we're all holding this balance in the county.
With, with T-Spot, all, everybody has to agree.
If we enter into an intergovernmental agreement, if we fail to enter into an intergovernmental agreement and we do not sign, as for any city decides not to sign this intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement that you have before you right now. There's a formula that's recalculated. It's in the state, by the state legislature where the 1 cent sales tax reverts to a 75% of 1 cent sales tax. And the money is distributed, is distributed by an aggregate average of the city's expenditures on road bridges over the last three years. And the percentage of that to the county's expenditures is however it's distributed.
So, so mustn't.
Absolutely done agree. And there's two cities. There won't get anything if the county decides to proceed with the form of 75.
Because they haven't spent anything on their roads and bridges in the past three years, so they run back to zero.
So we took my, the cities, tell me like, Saddle, White Plains, Woodpea, okay, that's. And then Mr. Mitty said, it would be two cities that won't get anything here to spend this. I want to see you.
Saddle, White Plains. My understanding. Is that what you're going to do at this point?
That's, that's correct. Larry's right. Just to make sure everybody understands, T-Spot is a county tax. County has the right to implement T-Spot. They can decide to do it or not do it. And as Larry said, when they decide to do it, if they do it with all the cities in agreement, they get that extra 25% of cent, they get a whole 1 cent. If they don't do it with the cities agree, then it's only 0.75. And then the formula is the distribution, the way Larry described it. So if you're a city that hasn't, say you saved up for a project four years ago, you did your big road resourcing project, but you hadn't spent on any money since you could save it up, you wouldn't get any. On the contrary, if you lost the budget and spent the entire amount of your budget on road resourcing, it would be a much bigger benefit for you if that was what you had done. Unfortunately, presently, what the facts that ran up here are that the county has adopted a form of an IGA and essentially told you, take it or leave it. And their understanding is either you take this agreement, this proposed, and they'll do it at 1 cent, and it will be split up the way to the agreement has. Or they, they, they've said, who knows if they fall through, but right now they're saying, if you don't sign it, then we'll just go with the state allocation of funds, the smaller tax, and keep those two cities for, get a few more seats.
So Mr. Mitty, how do you feel that other cities in the county feel about this? What they take on, you think they're, they're on, supporting?
What I know at this point is I believe about the, I think Mary's talking more than I have.
I think what, what Senator Turner said, that the county has here, that this is it, take it or leave it. Just to bring you up to speed where we are, this morning, we sent out a county. Who was asking that the county would take 7%. Greensboro take 14%. Union going 7%. Saddle 2%. Woodpea 3%. White Plains 4%. That would bring, that would rob the county of about $750,000 off where they initially wanted to be. And just say, if you, that'll show that you're trying to work with, with the cities and get behind with support. You know, they're pro. Because nowadays, give it to, give it to the living, whatever, not spend that general funds. They don't have to take general funds, they don't have to take this splosh and put toward, toward roads, road streets. But that county office was declared. And so that, that's, that's where we're at. I think every other city is afraid, each risked other cities that, those small cities that stand not to get anything. I mean, they might as well say, man, they'll, they'll sign anything. You know? So that's, that's where we are, ready to go with the council.
Mr. Mary, it's also important too, that the council, Larry. It's not that the county decides to implement the tax, they have to go to the voters to get approval to do that. And right now, the county would like for that question to be considered at the May primary. Now, there's no requirement that it be done of that, of that by state law. They could pick a November primary if they, if they wanted to. But that discretion lies with the county. I think there are some practical things going on too that the county claims is required this decision to be made very fast in process. I can't speak to the validity of that. I, I would tell you, I think if you obviously want to get this stuff started and kind of hire it up quickly if you can, I don't know if this is dire, but this has been there up to me. I know practically, if we say wait a week and we negotiate, we got it out, if we could, if it could be done where you have it at time. If there, what I can't speak for is can the other cities call meetings and approve an agreement? Can the county call meeting and get quorum, approve an agreement? Can it get to the registrar at a time, come about? I don't know. But I do, I can't tell you today that we have to do it right now. I kind of feel like the state law gives a lot of power to the state, to the county when they implement this. I also think that the state, the county could also dictate to us that it's got to go faster than it has to. I don't know if we'd feel a more or the other about how dire the situation is, but it's obvious the county's acting like it is.
Yeah, and, and if the county were around, you say, we have, primary came up in May, right? So yeah, it, it, who should agree to propose? I think that's why we're trying to do it, Mr. Mitty. There's one issue, but I think, yeah, so if they're talking on in May, because this, I mean, is the, they're, they're way behind that. You told me the day, you know, Mr. Mitty.
You, you, or if you're doing it on a, a comparable basis, which makes it more expensive, or you're doing it along with your general election or your primary, then yes, that has to be significantly leading up.
So in order for, either way, I mean, seems like we all have to act to the navel in this world, that's shit, it's with our constituents. On the calculation, passing this or not passing. And we're talking about two and a half months. So there's a lot of stuff behind and after in between then and there. I mean, it's just not something that's just that formal value, something that we gotta have conversations with people, I can move about as well.
I, I think the thing is, you're right, but the thing is, well, we, we decided to have a conversation that the county still has that authority to go ahead and say, we're going to push it, not with a 4% or a 75%. So it, it is what we're doing, it's saying, do we, do we want the 4% and we allow them to go and do the 0.75 on there?
I believe they would have been going to do 0.75. They're just holding that out there, they said they were saying that whatever, everybody agree.
Okay. Yeah, that's, how much money would that be just that pump?
That's a lot.
Well, they need that.
That's about, that's about five years plus a year. That, that is, that is the third round there. We're looking at with the 6.5% that they're going to give us, that's only about, what, 320?
360?
360.
Yeah. 360 to 30.
360 to 30. So that would be.
Four. Maybe, yeah. I get it.
Yeah, I, I want to be honest with you, remind you that we, we do have laws, negotiations.
I get it. I mean, this right here is just one side of the coin. Oh, oh, who knows, Mr. Mitty? With the mailman, how do you, how is, like, playing hardball? Who that playing hardball? You know, to see my young piece of, I don't know, oh, I don't know. I was there, where you coming? Wow. So, yeah, Councilman Mitty was saying, this right here, give us a letter to other, yeah. I hope so, they don't. You don't think so, you don't know? So you said that they already agreed to 0.75?
They go to, probably, apparently.
But if we agree to this, then they're saying that won't take another 1%. Take another 1%.
Assuming all the other cities also agree right here. I told the mayor on the way in that sort of new council member from existing one, y'all get paid big money to serve the city. This is where y'all have to earn it. This is the way the state set the law, they basically put us in a position where this, the county can say, take care of it. And one big factor in our, in this, the facts that you guys have, I was talking to Larry. A lot of counties don't have as many cities in it as you have, a free county does. And so it will be more impactful on some of the smaller cities. If you only had, say, Abboton County, you've got Eaton and Abboton, that's pretty much it. There, they don't have the same number of votes to look out for, and they don't have the same number of votes to get on board. It also requires everybody to be able to sing the same song if you're on the city side. All a lot of factors here. What, what your administration tried to do was offer different terms to, to the county. Say, we received yours and here's county, and the mayor referred to. They rejected that. The question is, they're, they're also telling me that it's, it's all, they're only going to take what they, what they give. It's a game changer. Do you respond with a number that's closer to what they want? Or can you say, no, let's go with what they want? And like the mayor said, nothing's done in the vacuum. Actually, it can take place on this one, on this matter, could have an impact on the lost, could have an impact on splosh negotiation. Be aware that it's not a, it's not a really easy decision to spot in a way.
Again, I, I think it so depends on both, I don't know, I'll read out that too.
So if we lost a group of, of, did you steal last, the people have to speak.
And they defeated it last time.
Right. Do you, I mean, do you, do you think it failed the last time because of lack of knowledge, I would expect it for?
If, if, if you remember, there, there was a lot of editorials and editor on the lake about taxes in general. And I think that helped too. I don't think we have that anymore. I think everybody realizes that in, in a county that has this much tourism, everybody's going to benefit from that sales tax more than we could into it. Because we have so many people trying to, yeah, traveling and purchasing things, to include hotel rooms and everything else that are, that are, that. everything else that are, that generates this tax.
So you say you feel good about this time, man?
About it passing, I feel better about it this time than last time. I think, I think it probably won't pass this time.
You're looking at a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar addition to, you know, funding for the city. And you can't kick that market, I mean, man, that's right, no losses to, no losses. Uh, imagine my hope is that they could say, if we were to go in this direction, we'd have a bust, we'd have negotiations, you know, side, but nobody has crystal ball. And then too, uh, man, Cassie. Yeah, we got there, we was in, we was in pretty good relationship with each other. The county. And last, you know, five, six years. My take, you know, uh, everything seemed like it coming up against us, man, I don't want to lose that relationship by no means. But I don't want to just jump in everything so fast and quick that they say it. You know, we know what's in it, but, I mean, uh, I think that was supporting, Mr. Mayor, I really do. Thinking that I'm getting something back in. Councilman, I don't, I don't want to make you promises, did you say, we'll, we'll be strong back in? Okay. Now, I will say something, I'm not owed to, uh, the T-Spot. But I am owed to the number that they're willing to, that they're trying to give us. I think that we, we in the city agree, we reserve a little bit more. But again, we, we have to crawl forward. So can I ask this, so can I ask this question, uh, is this something that must be more than there, do we need, do we have will go into the negotiation? Or is it just technically? It, it basically technically, we, we can say that, but again, like he said, they've already put it on their table. They said, if they don't agree, then with about four, with point seven five. And then two cities will be. Well, yeah. Yeah, based on what we do, sometimes we're paying up a little weak side, just that, very much.
Yeah.
I don't want to get, get, it, it's kind of different, man, but I, I think we need to take it. And that's it, that's it.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not old to T-Spot, like, like I think top, then. We're dollars.
And you can say, if they say, they're going to, on seven, that's it, unless we're, we're going to check. Or, or, like, hell, yeah.
We're fine, no.
That's the answer, so. Yeah.
It's a hard way to be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Then I was asking a question, do we have to do, they are, are you negotiating? See, and, and there's no more, after, there's no more negotiation because what you're doing. I mean, they, they, yeah, and they'll be out there, they, they are, but see, but say, they're already through it. That's right. Oh, that is, immediately we go. Yeah.
And that's, and that's to the other point, it's not a legal that you have to do it right now. It's that they're telling you that that's how they're going to interpret our action. And I think the options you have are to not approve the IGA at all, uh, to approve the IGA as presented, or approve the amended IGA where you make changes to the document. Now, the county is telling you, you only have two options, approve it or don't. But this body, you can, you can read that, this is kind of a game of chicken, and if the county really can follow through, they, they appear to, they look a lot of reason to doubt that one, but then it will also mean that if you change the numbers in here a little bit, they still, I, I don't know, I don't, that you have to get the, uh, three members of that board to tell us on what, what they're doing with that.
So the amendment, City, City Attorney, it's still, they won't allow them. And I'm asking, would it allow them to put it on the May, May that?
If everybody adopted, and that goes back to the practical reality of when you have the other four cities in the county for an IGA to be effective, everyone has to be on it. And so, um, this is maybe more complicated if it was just us in the county. You could, you could have these go back and forth. Whatever we send back to the county, it doesn't do any good unless those other four cities are in favor. So, you know.
And I think those cities are going to be looking at what we do. They'll be today, I'll tell you, you'll live there.
Uh, they're going to make tomorrow, it's, it's all very bad, but.
No, the cities.
Oh, yes, the cities are, and then the county will make tomorrow to rescind the previous, uh, vote and have a new vote for the IGA.
So if this body, whatever decision you want to make, you can communicate that to the cities. If you adopt this version, you can tell the other cities, this is what we adopted. If you pass the amended version, the different number version, you can give that information to the cities, let them make a decision on it. Uh, or if you don't vote on it at all, tell the cities.
The cities, the other cities, no, they're going to be a counter to the county. I just received a phone call, one of them, the mayor's, he was, he, he was scared that we would pass it. Only that we got, that I've been the other way through. Yeah, we, we hope it comes back, we hope it trumps that. That's what the law is said here. And kind of, Councilman Neil, you know, you get, kind of, go back, you get thrown on and take, take a lead, that's it, you know, undiscussing. And here you go, Savannah, just say, they already voted to do the point seven five budget. We agree with it, and everybody else, they are consenting to it, one. Well, you're wanting to see, right?
Right.
But like you turned, you said, it is their tax, it's not our tax.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, something, yeah. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, we did, yeah, we. I mean, it's, well, yes, it is. And I, I, I told him, Mr. Mayor, when you come from, Mr. Mayor. What, how, what type of motion did it say? You motion that we approve the, uh, the, the.
Yeah.
As presented?
Yeah.
I'm taking.
If we had motion, it said that we approved the IGA standard in a further discussion. In a further discussion. No further discussion. No further discussion. All those that pay, that we know are basically writing. And, uh, all of those. The attorney's leaving. Let's see, Councilman, roll ahead and you move to praise.
Heavenly Father, stop by and do what I'm doing, we've got this station. And we need to have my body, so. Bless this city, Cassie, let us do a job that we in line into five three, five three, the world to. The end of this season that we can agree on, uh, yes, the courage to accept that we can, and we basically do the time, you know. Father, thank you so much, and so much, Lord, you need to, everything, thank you, Jesus. Bless all of the hand, hearts, and heart. At the time, with another decision, we've got a part to say we're going for, which is not for.
Yeah.